Nice. Perfect, yes, okay. We got a. Beautiful day. We are all set, okay. Good evening, on hold to order our meeting tonight in this Municipal Park Foundation Board on Tuesday, September ninth. Row call, Ashley Bryant is present. Jeffrey Cohen's absent. Chris Colson.
Present.
Present, Ken Daniels.
Present.
Sandra Freeman's absent. Chris Ott.
Here.
And William Pepper, absent.
Here.
Good evening. Just about to Jeffrey did ask for those who lain, I believe he mentioned joining later on, so as soon as he joins a little bit before. Okay. Number two prayer, we could bow, as you see, the Lord's Prayer. Somebody started to sound bad.
Our calling.
Who are in that? I believe that. Thank you, and how long? Thank you, William. I've heard that's it is not. It is just fair, exactly. And forget it, so trust us. As you give those who trust us against us. You made a slight temptation. That's the worst thing you can do. But I mean. The power or you're like. Road burning. I'm like, thank you, Chris. Boston, Canada. And we say, thank you for the presence. I don't think it's stupid, but I. In the United States, so. In the US public, which stands. On my nation, America. Invisible, with liberty and justice. Chris, please, your ability function, John. Your.
I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement. Inspecting others and their viewpoints and finding solutions for the betterment of my city or town.
Thank you. Sure, we do have Jeffrey Cohen on virtual. Okay, perfect. Hi, Jeffrey. So that's six of us. Okay, number five, approval of a new meetings, August twelfth. We did sign one, well, big issue before. Can I mention from the floor?
I'll show them.
The second motion? Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, so discussion. The only thing I saw was, yeah. I'm on here. Number one, under the row hall, the one present, Colson is listed on there and he was not present that night. That's the only thing I saw.
Well, we just need to fix that.
Had a meeting official motion to amend. Eric, I put a motion on the floor to amend the meeting minutes on August twelfth to remove Chris Colson under the role of. Awesome. Please agree. Here's all right.
I'm very, um.
Are you in the virtual votes, Stuart, in here?
Uh, I also did not, William and Jeffrey, did you guys vote?
I'm sorry, what did you say again, say that again?
Vote on the motion to amend removing Chris Colson from the present on meeting minutes. And then seconded.
Okay. I agree with that.
I, I approve.
Perfectly stated, perfect. So number six, um, so there are still have to vote on the meeting minutes as amended. Okay. Um, so motion on the floor to vote on the amended meeting minutes.
You still have, you can use the original motion from Mr. Daniels and Mr. Ott.
Okay.
And so we just need to vote, because you just voted on the minute, okay.
So vote on to approve the amendment. And.
And I was not there, so should I vote?
You, you're welcome to abstain if you like.
Does agree? All right. Any opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Okay, move on to number six. Very good consideration of my statement for the office, though we have. Mr. Carroll here, received this message. The most concerned over. Yes, please.
Hello. Good guys. Um. This is the. I feel like the final P and L. Um, I feel like there's still some transactions through the bank. And then there's a check that got mailed to Little Dog. And we'll end up closing that account once everything's gone through. I feel like ninety-nine percent of this go through. But we just picked up a couple chats from the town. Uh, yesterday or before. So they got deposited. Um. Saying today, I think they're in this report, so. I can't read this thing, it's so damn little, I'm not gonna catch you. Um, so I, I think that just in this report is. Town put in twenty grand. And we. Had to come to down the key in after everything was said and done for. Roughly five grand, I can't see the numbers, so I'm not gonna pretend. That somebody could see that, I didn't think they would have thought about. Um. I think.
For the five thousand dollars, that referencing the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
So those, I was actually gonna ask a question on, because it does state in the contract that we are responsible to pay for those. So I was wondering why those were the only ones listed and not like. The insurance that we paid for or the alcohol license or anything like that.
All right, well, she got a copy of those?
She does, yes.
Okay.
So I, that was just my question when looking over, of only two of the items listed. In the contract, like the town said, on top of the twenty thousand.
She could be here at night, um. She should have. Soccer game with her dog, but, um. I'm gonna let her answer that. I'm sure they can put that, put that in there. Um. I don't know what, do you know what those numbers were by hand? I'll hand.
I have a quick. Quick books again for those purchases and all of those will be. For our previous fiscal year, so FY twenty-four, twenty-five, that's what was.
Okay. So in addition to the twenty thousand, in addition to the twenty thousand, the town paid for fire. And beliefs of about thirty-seven hundred year funding. And then we also paid some additional.
The insurance and the alcohol license.
So what would that be roughly?
A little over a thousand.
Okay. So we would, in the whole way, about twenty-six. Okay. Thank you.
But those were out, and I decided to triple check when we were cutting those invoices and we were going back and forth. Looking at that contract, it does stipulate that those were.
You have questions? I don't, I just don't, I haven't fully agreed all this yet, but I will, and I'm sure. Kelly will be happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, then if, if we think of me with. More than glad, I'm able to make another trip for when finalize the bank account, which will be out as well. Um. You know, I'm just gonna. Does anybody got any questions in here?
I have one, that is not. That's young.
Um. Yeah. This sucks, and I hate it, and, um. It's, um. It, it's. It, it, the numbers are what they are, but, you know. I, I gotta say, it drives me crazy, but, um. Yeah, there's a bunch of good people on this board and there's a bunch of people that don't do shit on this board. And there's a bunch of people who are great in this town, and there's a bunch of people that don't do anything to help. I don't know what that is. Um, you know, we even had a great talk about it, I think, last time we were here, but. Um. It just makes it hard. When everybody's pulling a different direction to do something. You got a great facility. Um. The park works when everybody's on board with it. You know, and we've seen that based on the last Blue Crown Festival that we did. Was a home run and, you know. You made forty thousand dollars. This one, we lost twenty-six thousand dollars and, um. So, so it, it works. But it takes everybody pulling in the same direction. So it's frustrating to watch it. From my perspective, on my position. It's, it's sad when some people are given that they're all and others are just bitching. Or complaining, or, or, or not helping at all. And I don't know. How you fix that, it seems like a bigger problem. Um. But the park should be something that everybody loves. And, and. Don't work against it, work for it. You don't have to agree with everything, but you gotta do something with that part. It's, it's, um, it's, um, venues are so rare. In this day and time. Um. And, and, um. You know, we, we search for venues. And, and where you can control all the controllables. Um, and it, it's, it's a shame. That everybody can't get on the same page for that. Um, so I hope you do more events. I'd love to be involved, I mean, I, we did all our work, we didn't make a dime either, you know. Um. Um, but, you know. It's a great park, it just needs, you gotta be doing stuff there and you need infrastructure in it, so I hope you keep working towards it.
Do you think any of this has to do with the fact that we delayed it till it was really hot out?
Well, you know. I would say typically that's not the season, you know, um. To, to do something in the summer, because, you know, everybody's. Got plans. And they love beaches and boats and, you know, but there's a festival every weekend in Charleston. Um. And when we did the Blue Crown Festival, we did it August twenty-eighth, it was. Hotter than the eighties, you know, um. It, it was terrible that day. Um, so is that a factor? Um. I don't know, I think a spring or fall would be. Much better. Um, but, you know, you, you, you're gonna compete with something every weekend. Um, and we moved this a couple times, so that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, the mixed message doesn't help probably. But, um. I, I think if you get out in front of it and you plan something, you stick to it and, um. And. I feel like an oyster, as you go over, huge there, the barbecue festivals are huge. Country music's hot right now, jazz festivals are good right now. Um. You know, we always do a taste of something, taste of folly, taste of Charleston. I don't, I don't think Baltimore has the infrastructure for it. Um. But, uh, um. And even the Blue Crown Festival, you know, I feel like there's, there's legs on that, like we know, so, um. Uh, I, I just feel like if you got a venue and you can benefit. By controlling. The tickets and the door and the sponsors and the food and the bad, like it gives you, gives you great advantage where. Those people just pay the dues and then it makes it tough.
Well, I guess what I'm going to, this will be my last question, I promise, um. We had hoped to bring in a lot of people from off, out of on, offshore, and. Those people didn't come, we really can't blame that on confusion in the town of armed over its board. So there's two things that happened, we have guests, we had a lot of confusion within town, we all agree that they're trying to make it. More unified, try to get everybody to get along, um. But it seems like we would have expected a lot more people from. Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, I mean, we, we marketed Georgetown to North Mount Pleasant, you know, thinking. You know, you think Wanda High School has four thousand students, you know, and think that would be a simple, um. A simple thing, um, so first time festival. I think there's definitely some confusion there, but, um, you know, we, we use the same. Game plan as we did with the Blue Crown Festival. And if you were here, there was a ton of people not from here. Um, if I did that, um, you know. Probably less than twenty percent of the people were made up of locals, I'd say, um. You have people from Baltimore, I mean, you know, it's just, I think what, what they were coming to, they knew what it was and, um. Uh, you know. I, I, I don't know what makes you come or don't come, or what's against it, or what's working for you, or your competition, but. Um. Uh, you know, you got, you just gotta be consistent, we've got a gap in the action, I think there too, that might be. You know, some of the. Missed chance. Um. But I, I feel like if you pick a good time of the year and the weather suits you, the parks there and the lakes there and the. You know. It, it sets up.
If I may, I actually did have a couple of questions related to the P and L.
We drove.
Confessing, um. So one of the mistakes was also the dumpster costs from Trash Girl, I thought at one of the meetings. You stated that the trash service would be free and they'd be coming to pick it up as part of some of the in-flight donations.
We used.
Agree on that a little bit more?
Yeah, sure, so the dumpster itself. Was a, um. We rolled one dumpster off, normally we put two, one on each side, so whatever that was, let's say it's. Every time I get one, it's like seven hundred bucks or something, seven hundred sixty-one, that's basically products added, but. Um. So the containers there, that, that's what it is, so we clean up the event the day of and put everything in the dumpster and they all off. So that, that's, that's a fee that, that just lives.
And why wasn't it budgeted for? Just out of curiosity, so the fork could have carried a little bit better?
I'm sure it's budgeted for.
It, um, the P and L says zero and the cost was six seventy-five.
Okay. Um, I don't know, we had last time, I don't know why it's on in there, it's very hard, I can't read this.
But this is, in the format that it was, um, this is the only way that the staff could do it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, dumpster, there it is.
And then the next one I had was also related to facilities, there's. Tents, tables, the stage on John Sam, the generator and the power stage. All of those costs were moved together, and if you add them up, they're nine thousand nine hundred and fifty. But then the total costs are twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen, but then on the side, it says that the check is for ten thousand dollars. Are you ready to explain that kind of difference as to why?
Yeah, so, so the, the, the original cost was. So we wrote a check for ten thousand, the, the original cost in the stage, the tents, tables. And. Sound system. Sound system, stage. Tents, tables, chairs. Um, were, um. I think it was fourteen thousand total. And we wrote a ten because we're rack asylum bank accounts, because he normally pay half upfront on that, we didn't pay until the. The day after the event, we wrote a check, because he was all worried. He did do a sponsorship in there. So I sent him a second check. And I can't read, I just can't read this stuff.
It would have been for. The additional two thousand five hundred and fifty.
Right, so really, really that invoice was like fourteen thousand, so traded the difference for a sponsor. Um. So the. Twelve, whatever you're saying there, there's two checks to step and sell.
Oh, but it's possible to get an updated one to have those two checks listed, so that we can.
Yeah, is, is the second check not in there?
No. Well, it.
It should be on the bank account, isn't it?
But to just kind of reconcile your P and L for the final one before it gets canceled, to just have it cleared up.
Yeah.
They're gonna ask similar questions and say, why are these listed?
Yeah, no problem.
And then, um. The other one I had was, we have terminals for each of the staff members selling your tickets. And for the t-shirts, is it possible to get an itemized list for each of the terminals to cross-reference, because. I don't recall selling seventy-eight t-shirts, because those weren't the biggest sales from. Personally being there the entire day, the eight tickets that we were having were. The cash sales, because we had to change it to five dollars. Because we didn't have ones.
I want to say there's two boxes of. Shirts we got, I went and sold seventy-eight shirts, but.
Well, because it listed on here that we sold seventy-eight t-shirts on the P and L, and then I was gonna count the t-shirts later to just. Proportions the two, and so just so many people have an itemized list to just. Main check.
Yeah, no problem.
And then. Can you go on to a little bit of lost on agency for the increase was bad because it was. The change of the date and they had to add it, and then why wasn't the board informed that increase, seeing that?
Well, you marketed one day and we're gonna do it and cancel the event. So we had to remarket. Um, and then right towards the end. We did a. Um. A. Social media buy. Um, for social media ads for a thousand bucks, I, I believe. Um, so it's just, you know, the two, we moved three towns, so. Um. That, that. That, that's the price, I use those guys on every event we do, I mean, they're just, they're solid, great.
I. I'm not saying that they didn't do a bad job, it, it just would have been nice for the board if. Those costs are going to increase, to just notify them to be like, hey, each time we're changing, here's the estimated cost to increase in.
Sure. Um.
Um, how are the in-kind donations kind of lumped into? The P and L feedback, because some of these in-kind donations, they also say that they have, you have tickets and general tickets.
Right.
Were they given those because of their sponsorship and then how is that affiliated with like expenses wise and? Problems?
Well, they, they, they come right out of the, you know, they're come right out of them, so if anybody's sponsoring something, they picked up. Um. Not parking, we didn't do parking for this, we did, um, VIP or general admission tickets. So it comes with your packaging or in the sponsored package. So they're all listed, every, 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 every sponsor has a. Certain amount of tickets that comes with their sponsorship.
And I'm asking a bunch of questions, but as a, if I was asked after why I would refer, um. It looks like that there were some bartenders and also the cups. Were not accounted for in the planned expenditures, but we did have them as. Prices toward how much wine we got sold and how many bartenders that we have, um. Could you go on to a little bit as to? Why they're gonna budget it and then the differences between those.
Um, the wine cups?
Right, because I mean, like if I was going to be. Setting it up and I would have said cups for wine. I know that I'm gonna be paying for it, I would have budgeted some sort of amount for an expense.
Yeah, well.
It says zero and then it's eighty-fiftieth charge.
Right, and so maybe, so the wine sponsor. But we had one who failed and then we, when we moved the date, we got a new wine sponsor. And he dropped the wine, but he did not drop the cups, they're supposed to be, I just went wrong.
And then was there a fixed price when you guys were talking about to the bartenders, or was that also with the, the switching event?
They are hourly and we cut like half of them, you know, so it would have been more than that, but we cut back because it was slow. You know, just like with the police and the, um, fire. Department.
And is it possible to show like? The also breakdown of like what the one and twenty thousand were in the town that we gave and then. What was the price afterwards to try to see like an accurate. Account for that?
So the twenty went into the bank account.
Right. Is there?
And then money started going and the ticket money started going, and so. You know, you normally could back that out at the end. So what?
Yes, because it's just for like our auditors, because they're gonna see that we've had a twenty thousand dollar check.
Right.
And it's like, how can I explain that purchase of exactly what it meant to, because it's public's money? So it's going boom, 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 up to twenty thousand dollars, and then the overages. I'd have all of those receipts and showing the announcements, be like, hey. This was the event that we had, here's so much, the vendors' costs were, here's so much town costs were. So that we can reconcile our costs.
Oh. I.
If that, if that.
I would say you have a check for, for the park or twenty thousand dollars that went towards an event, but, I mean, that's. You, you try to put this P and L in the goals?
Well, not put to the P and L, but just kind of. I know some council members, they would like to do a little bit. Corn picking, right, so it's like, hey, you gave this money, I would like to see what's. Some purchases for it, because I don't see where the twenty thousand is listed, we just talked about it in the bank account. So when I'm looking at a P and L, I would wanna see like. All of this, or if we're not going to include the town's account on it, I would have to produce something for the board to be like. Here's how a little town could do it. Does that make sense?
No.
That might be a fun question.
You know, I mean.
Because I just wanna be able to see, because I'm, I'm sure somebody or a board member would wanna ask. How much does the town have based off of this? Because we know we paid the twenty thousand, but what that paid for out of that twenty thousand? Well, we also paid for police and fire and stuff, what's in part about twenty thousand, same with the insurance and the alcohol. Liquor license. How that ties into it? So and then all of your costs, you add them all together and that should equal the total profit and loss. Or.
So I would go back to the contract, I guess, is what I would say, if you're looking for over twenty grand. And then. That's just me.
That's just.
I'm asking. Um. I think if you say. Where are your twenty grand? Um.
No is also an answer too, of just saying that, I'm just. Thinking of questions that.
So I use the contract because the contract states you paid the twenty grand, you paid the liquor license, and we paid the insurance, so I feel like that's. Pretty common, and then.
Well, can I interrupt for a minute? There's somebody who's been watching this since the beginning, all the funds were co-megal. Right, the twenty grand went in, then they started making deposits from things they sold, and they started spending money, so. Man, that's huge, I'm not in part of this, but if you tried to go back and say the, the twenty grand paid for this and that. You'd be making it up. Kind of, because everything that Cohen did.
Okay. That, thank you. I would just make that note on it to say.
But the con, yeah, the contract was written that, right? My two cents.
I use.
Okay.
That's about it, yeah, that'll be, we're talking, we're doing.
And I have a bunch of those, but that's all I have for right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve, just a question, when you work, so you do Boon and Law and some other big, you know, levels for.
Right.
So other big events, what? What's your interaction like with? Like. I don't know, are you just dealing with the management of Boon and Law? Yeah, are they pretty much?
I used to be able to own her all the time, but.
Yeah.
Because, like.
The reason I ask that is, this kind of maybe seemed unique, like you're kind of working with. Us as the park board through the town council, you're signing your contract, right, um. Administratively, is there a better way we could do this? I obviously know you, you sign a contract, I guess that's for the town, but. Time, just briefly, like, are, are we unique in this?
Yeah.
You do stuff at folly too, so what, could we get it better if we're gonna do another event? What, what can we do?
Well, uh, uh, you know. I was very. Cautious coming into this event, because the last Blue Crown Festival. I remember my life in somewhere where I was given some forty thousand dollars and I got, I mean. Ha, butchered, butchered. And, and, um, so I, I, when we went into this, I'm like, oh man, I really don't wanna deal with y'all council, because it's so. Confrontational. On, on that last set, every, I mean, we went, I went in front of the council every single time. So when we go to the council, and, and folly's changed this since we've, we've been out of there now, it's, it, it. They approve all the events at one time. So if you're like, hey, we wanted four events, you, you got them all approved at one time. Done with council.
Well, and one caveat too is the folly festivals were also done by.
The business association.
So they were asking for approvals to shut down Center Street. And they still coordinated with the police and fire department and staff to make sure, and public works. To assist with working the event, but that was the only council approval. It wasn't having a festival at town property, so I wouldn't really compare. Apples to apples, there'd be like more like apples to oranges, this, the city had no. Authority saying what the festival's going to look like, how was it going to run, what type of. Information, since it was a third party, here we have more than like, as I say. Town sponsored event. Like if the town is putting it on.
Okay, well, that, that's, Kevin, that's really my question is. Is that the right way to do it? Why, why is it a town? Why, why is it a town sponsored event?
I think that was the purpose of the park board, so you want to raise funds for the town, so the reason why the park board was created in the fashion that it was. Was to be an entity of the town, on the town property to respond for for the for the park.
Uh, yeah, I I definitely understand, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong. I'm just thinking like, can council just? Approve it, we sign a contract, boom, run it. Right, he, you're you're on autopilot, you do you. You don't need to report in, we gave you twenty grand. Why, why? How could you get to doing that?
Like, like, that would have to be written out in the contract, to say that it didn't have to report that, it was trying to get more assistance from stating. What the visioners were telling to W L, that was part of the contractors, the way that it was written.
Right.
Let's work together.
Yeah, since this was our, I'm just trying to understand, like, if we're going to continue to do it, what? And and obviously, we we stumbled here, but this is the amount of their loss, so I I mean, yeah, we took a loss, but. There's always lessons to learn from good or bad, and sometimes you learn more from bad than you do good. Um, so I'm just trying to get to, if we're going to do it again. You, as Carol consulting here, what? We, I know you mentioned, hey, we all need to work together about that, but. So that doesn't change, but we still want to raise money for.
Okay, so. And in an ideal world, you would, and I thought that's just where you were going, no, I've sat in a bunch of stuff with this park board and. With Tom and with Robert and with Frank and with, I've sat in a lot of stuff before y'all were even. Form and Ashley and 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 um. So s- s- so this is what I thought I was getting into and turning it away more, but um. I thought the park board. Would get, would deal with the table. Get a budget, do an event, and I would report to Asher. Or Asher's position.
Okay.
Um, and and that's how we start. And then y'all were trying to form and not form and y'all had all this other mess going on, so there is a lot of. Uh, turmoil. Getting organized, I feel, but I feel once you. If y'all are managing the park, the money should be. For the park and not for the general budget, you know what I mean? So I feel like, well, we do an event, we allocated money for an event. And we did it for every event and fireworks and whatever else we're doing, right? So we knew what our budget was for the year already. Um, and and when I got there, they 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 weren't charging for events. So we started charging for it. And so we went through a hole, no different than this from the start to finish, but you need one person. You don't need nine attendants. Y'all figure it out and then one person should be able to link that, you know, coming in here is 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 so. I'm just gonna say it's draining. From anybody and I've got no time, I I got a lot of time, so it's super nice people everywhere around, but you can't get. Told nine ways to do something. So it's gotta be, what's the mission? What's the budget? And then your council on some expertise over here, I mean, we were laid out ready to roll, if we would have people, we would have a wonderful thing. We didn't have any people, so so, you know, the the templates there. The marketing, maybe you switch, maybe we switch companies and see what happens, uh, you know, I I I don't know. But you, if you could just get one voice, and the problem is the one voice, you got nine voices and they're. You don't get the same answer from anyone, but maybe a couple, but not really. So that's confusing. Um, so normally you'd have, you know, Willie, Willie and Boon Hall. Tim Goode and Rand Fallow did. I go to Tim and say, Tim, we're doing this, this, we're adding fireworks, we're shooting fire, we're moving. The fireworks place or whatever, and then he would delegate his side. Maybe his chief, the fire chief and whatever, um. Boon Hall, you had one person, we don't. And he's like, here, man, we got the park, it's a week out, set it up, do what you need, anything I have, I will make it easy for you. If you need my tractor or my guys or my whatever, it was just, it was a, felt like a joint effort, I think that's what it takes. Is somebody who's the event coordinator? Meaning the park.
Well, that's.
Manager, but meeting with the park manager, right? I mean, like, I'm out there and I'm like. We had trouble with the liquor license, we had trouble with the grass cut, we had trouble with the ants, we had trouble with the wood barrels, you know, and so we're managing things that. Could be, if we knew ahead of time and one person could say, do this. Or make that happen without having to jump through, we couldn't even beat, we couldn't even beat. We had to get a quorum to beat, I'm like, fuck, we got an event coming down, excuse my language, but we have an event coming down that we can't beat. So there were certain times that I felt like. We were in our own way, there was too much red tape or something there, but so one person had to be authority. To make judgment calls. Would make life way easier. For y'all, if not, you you know, it it's just confused, it'll be confusing to have a feeling. Um, but but the park is awesome and y'all, y'all, everybody, you know. I think wants it to do. Um, you know, is it going to be a profit center for you? Who, I don't know, you know, but it's how long go ahead of it?
In two thousand and nine, I'm serious, I mean, well, and so we probably have some questions to do on this tonight, but. The board is going to be, or there's not just going to be, you know, there are frameworks here, that's, that's not town council one, there's a most.
Yeah, that's.
Big, you know, it's not just going to be one person. Think I have the idea behind the board being established, just that we bring nine of us and just in together to make decisions. Whether that be hard or easier in the middle somewhere, you know, I don't think it's changing.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Anything else to do on right now?
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you too. All right, I appreciate it.
Yes.
I'm still terribly to tighten this up for you, Kat.
We'll get any other interesting questions we have together regarding that.
Yeah, yeah, anything you need, I'm, I'm all aboard, I'll really try to make them go along. I'll get that.
Thank you.
I see. I mean, I think the sign company, I think they're all using the, I got a guide, that's great field, if you need them.
We'll let you know.
Yeah. Okay.
Moving on, number seven, updated consideration of the bids received for the gate fencing and parking lot project, um. Chris and I have been working on this together, I think for the record, let's clarify, there was. Request from council to get an automatic quote for our gate at automatic two, which I do have, those quotes, twenty million, about twenty thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars. And then we kind of put our heads together and back in June, maybe motions are approved, we were looking at gate one. Now, we thought that gate one was a more passive approach to the day, also with the natural tree lawn area. The already farm pack sold is there and what could be lower construction costs compared to gate two. I'm prepared to make both proposals to town council in October, provide them with the information and let them decide how we want to move forward. Um, I am waiting on two more quotes for the um grading. At gate one and gate two, it's, gate two is very low, it's very wet, I was out there on Friday, you cannot. Drive through to right there, the grass, so it's going to require either some s- builder or some grading, like, yeah, or some gravel, we're going to have to. Do that, I think there's probably going to be more of that cost at gate two than gate one. I'll have those quotes with them the next week or so and I can email them to the board, that way they can review that, because I'd like to be forward for. Proposing that to council um on the October town council meeting.
We would, before making the motion for. The regulation, it would have to be a involved meeting, so it would have to be with the forums, so we can create a special pub meeting once we have that. To make that formal discussion before the October meeting, but you wouldn't be able to. Send it out to the board and have each member say yes or no, because that would violate FOIA. Okay. I mean, unfortunately, so like, it would, for having the formal motion to bring it before the council, it would need to be that involved meeting. Just like this.
Yeah, but we could have a special meeting just if you have that.
Yes, and that could be within twenty four hours, so you guys. If Ashley text me and says that six to five grand, a special pub meeting for wine save. I would be able to, one item, just to officially put this on that. Okay, do you want to talk about some of the quotes that you got to, is that any?
I can do that.
Yeah.
Um. So I met um. With um a fencing company, I'll just put it at that, um. That company, we came out and looked specifically at the gate one here. And uh, I've gotten some questions about, well, why fencing? Because we, going back to what Ashley just said, you know, gate two, we already have quotes there for the automatic. Gate, um, just some background of why I proposed the fencing is, is I live next to the park and there's a lot of vehicles that. Routinely, I'm talking daily, driving in the park. I I understand that, it's not controlled, we have no enforcement other than the the, if someone calls the sheriff's. Department to come out and and say you shouldn't be be driving in that area, so I I really think we need to address the. Vehicles, right? If a gate opens, it opens onto a road.
It's an installation.
Where do you go? Uh, we have a parking lot, I can almost guarantee no one's going to stay in that parking lot. You might as well drive down the road and look for maybe another parking lot closer to the water or or what have you, so. I'm, I really am proposing that there at gate one. Uh, that gate remains open. We don't need the large cost of an automatic gate, which. I feel the maintenance costs alone, you know, living in a neighborhood with an automatic gate, it breaks all the time, so. Uh, I feel that an open parking lot that's smaller, you know, enclosed with. Post and rail or some type of fencing that matches the existing gates already. Is just a way to signal the people when we drive in, this is my designated parking area and I cannot drive.
So you can park there and walk through through ten room hall.
Yeah, absolutely. Well.
It's supposed to be.
Not supposed.
But it's all.
Because who's going to open and close the gate? If it's automatic. That breaks, I guarantee it's going to break. Then who goes that we don't have a park manager, like, we don't have a ranger, we don't have full-time staff. So. That's, that's where my argument kind of went towards like an open parking lot, that many facilities. Uh, you know, um, the basketball courts at Charleston Town, I was right up there, off of Seventy O. That's open. Um. So you could have a gate, but who's going to lock it? Who's, who's, who's going to manage to leave it? Um, so we might as well just leave it open with the designated parking area that's fenced in, so yes.
So I have, I have three gates, so are you suggesting the other two would be fenced off? And there'd be one gate with parking, you think it does?
Yes, and obviously the other two gates can be open for events or special activities. Now, you could do this at gate two as well, the only reason I I really think that is your nicest part of the park. And to fence something or to put gravel over that nice grass area that is already super wet. One's going to require a higher cost. And two, I I don't know, I I kind of like that field and it kind of lends itself to, hey, this is a green space, this is open, it's it's. A park. The gate one area is more like, uh, that was the hallway, it's from, it's probably the hardest path there yet.
Indeed.
Did I know?
Yeah, definitely.
It's tucked away up against the trees, but still for future use, has some like access right there. Um, so I just think those are things when we're talking about this that that we need to think about and it's really. Their vehicle only entries, because no one is there, right? There's going to be no guardhouse, there's no one that's going to say. Oh, you can't drive over here, you know, so it it's going to be a consumable issue and I can guarantee it'll still be an issue. You know, side by sides and thrillers and, you know, all those things driving through, but at least he, the police. Can point to that and say, no, that's the bit we need. So, again, I'm open to suggest, but that was my thought process of just trying to, you know.
So i- in that case, we need one of the other gates with general access for maintenance and and.
That is.
We we need to.
Yeah, well, and if you remember the plan, I'm sorry, should have brought a copy, but it had, so I had them. Two vehicular access gates. Oh, in that fencing proposal. So for the gate, if you think about it, goes down along the lake in both directions, you know, one that goes towards. Gate two and the other that goes towards the back of the park, there would be gates on those existing roads for mowing. You know, maintenance access, so. So the the quotes came out at about one eleven thousand five hundred. Um, and then those all three gates. No.
Well.
That fencing just for, uh. Oh, three gates.
Yeah, it would cover all three gates for the town. Because it would do the gate one with the. Parking and all, and then the other two would be.
Lock.
Yeah, it'd be locked.
Yes.
You still need a parking lot quote in there, you said eleven to.
Eleven five was just the fence with the two gate, they can, I call them internal gates, right? They're, they're basically the fence that opened and closed, so, um, we're, so. Actually, that's, that's where the fence is.
Yeah.
We we are still working on getting to to other vendors, so that's the other part, and I felt a little uncomfortable. With, I'm kind of representing the board, which is okay, I make that very clear that this is a for. It worked, right?
Yeah.
Um, and this is just, so I don't, am I okay to do that? This is.
Yes, but I would also say too that I should also be copied on it. For those bits, because then I can reach back out and just in case that there's other questions. It's not typically recommended to go that route, because then I'm not sure where, what the the physical bids are or, um. To see like what the that budget is for that, you'd more have that question for me so that I can answer that more frequently. And for FOIA purposes, it'd be on the town server, so right now this basically you're receiving. I don't have, but if you would mind, just forward any of those.
Okay.
Copy me on those, say this is the title representative and.
Well, good, I'm sorry, but we we just have to go forward with this. And when the town will form a RFP? For these, to get the bids.
Depends on the cost and our procurement policy, so like you could. Depending on what the current procurement policy is, you would say like how many bits that you need as minimum. And if it's over that threshold, then we would have to go for a formal RFP, that would also have to be subject to town council approval as well. So like, we could say like, this is an estimated cost, and like, we could create a scope of work. If we're going to do a formal RFP, we could say exactly what we're looking at, so the question we have, are the gates? Is there a little gate in the middle of it? How big is the gate two, would be another questions?
It's tent, so it's a, it's two feet bigger than the standard, it's. Vehicular gate, I asked to make it a little bigger for our, you know, tractors and stuff.
I would check it prior to purpose to make sure that they can also get through the gate.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's something that I haven't. Have, I know that we looked at the concept of it, I do apologize for not getting one ball through the physical. Part of the bid process.
Yeah, and actually, I, I don't know if you have anywhere on the gravel. Uh, part, but that that's a missing piece, that we're, we're thinking, but probably. This is all part of twenty five grand.
Probably.
Or or the parking area in this fence, so a complete.
Yeah, I think that's probably about.
So it's about the same as an auto gate?
It's the same as an auto gate, but then the auto gate, I just have to say, we still need more infrastructure. So great, if we want to go the auto gate way and and, you know. It opens and closes, but now we. It opens and closes, but now we still have to think about parking. And. Vehicle management. I don't know what you want to follow, but we we need a a parking area. Um which is a main blue div.
That would be an additional cost at gate two. Okay, it sounds like I know that's more to do. Of course, for parking.
Yeah, yeah, I I do too for fencing.
Right.
Um just to get. Additional quotes.
Okay. Anything else? And I would just send that all to the board too for looking at it, so that way if they've got any other questions for. Comments related to it for like looking at the document, it would be helpful to have. Something to show. And then we sign up for informational works, so we need to then discuss more. Yeah. We could do a special meeting just for that before that. Okay, um number eight, establishing the following subcommittees of the municipal park foundation board. So do we have a motion on the floor to establish the following subcommittees of the municipal park foundation through? One fundraising and grants. Two finance. Three events and community engagement. D park operations and E legacy cultural affairs. And I think that may a number, but I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Second, second in discussion. We're gonna change to give us. William Jeffrey. Do you have any discussion on us?
I'm all good.
And um Mr. Cohen, it looks like. Um he left at six fifteen, I'm not sure who else. He came back on, I think it was just a weird connection. Okay. So second motion on the floor, discussions. Can we uh do this agree to the? Five subcommittees fundraising grants, finance, events and community engagement, park operations, legacy and cultural affairs.
I agree.
Alright.
Mr. Cohen.
I was in a bad area, my phone went out and said. Okay, do you pick that for me please?
Yeah, so the vote was for establishing the following subcommittees of the municipal park board. One is fundraising grants, two is finance, three is events and community engagement. Four is park operations and five is legacy and cultural affairs.
I'm in agreement with that.
Thank you. Okay, the next piece of that would be delegation of um board members. Two committees, so we wanna start with the first one fundraising grants. Any board members who would wanna be on that subcommittee?
Actually, could I just ask a question?
Of course.
Is there is there a goal of like how many should be on the committee? Um are you looking? I would assume two at least, right?
That three, three.
Yes, well, okay. With only. Seven active.
It's gonna be a little.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's great, but just.
You can also wait to. Not to interrupt, but you can also wait to see. At the next town council meeting, hopefully they will appoint. The full membership and then you can discuss that later, or if you'd like to move forward and add those people later on. What do you have there?
And does somebody chair the committee or was it just a move?
I think somebody should chair the committees. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I would say I would think I think somebody should chair the committees, I think each committee should have a chair.
I'd be happy to chair for him, so just put my hand up.
Okay. Do you wanna name chairs?
I I think it would be a good idea um.
And then we can add people to the. And then at least we have a chair on each subcommittee and some of us can go forward with that and start too.
Yes.
I think we should go. To make this the cleanest. I would go through each individual subcommittee to say. We're going to establish I nominate these people to be on the floor or go through each of the members to say which ones you didn't want to. To be on for nominations and then have a formal vote. At the subcommittees to say like this and then who is the chair of that committee and vote on the choice. Yeah, I'm trying to get my head around. Have that sort of word. Well, Chris. I use myself as an example, like I. Move that I'd be part of the. Fundraising grants and park operations, or like and list off the ones that you're gonna be second and then vote on them. Or you go through each of them and say we're going to go. By. Nomination each one and do a roll call vote. To say for which ones you're going to say, even if I said the chair would say. Fundraisers and grants and go through each member of the board to say. I nominate this person, this person, this person. What I think. It gets a little tricky putting people onto each of the boards. Um about everybody.
Yes, I I think we could really. We're just missing Sanders too, we we know what.
We know what she wants. Yeah, I respect that said of Sanders saying she is interested in events, community engagement and legacy and cultural affairs.
I mean. In my opinion, we're never gonna have and you know, we have William and Jeffrey online. Everyone's here at once, uh I'm more progressive forward.
Me too.
We pushed it off.
I did. Okay, so. I'll move. I need help with this. Go to fundraising grants. Did you not find? You can say. Sorry, I was trying to. Phrase correctly, so you're moving to which way would you like to do that by by roll call vote or just by completely nominations? On the floor. Roll call. Look at us, see Sandra. No, there would be any privacy, but.
So we did nominate her.
Yes, okay, so let's just. Can I move to nominate?
Yep.
Alright, so. Who wants to be involved in this thing? I'll move to nominate myself. To sit on fundraising grants, I'll give it. Is that right?
Sorry.
And vote. Does agree group?
Alright.
Alright.
Any other nominations for? Motion for nomination for fundraising and grants. Okay. Um I'll move to nominate Chris Colson as the chair of the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay. The the degree?
Alright.
Any more nominations for finance subcommittee? I'll nominate myself to sit on the finance subcommittee with Chris Colson. Second nomination for myself, Ashley to be on the finance subcommittee.
Second.
Thank you, William. Does agree?
I agree.
Okay. I move to nominate Sandra Freeman to sit on the events and community engagement subcommittee. We have a second.
Second, second.
And I guess at this point. We 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 just started on nomination. Okay, go to my nomination, does agree, I agree. Jeffrey, you can win.
I agree.
Any other nominations for the events and community engagement?
I nominate myself.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Alright, alright.
Perfect, thank you, William. Um park operations. Any nominations?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone still.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm doing.
I second Chris's nomination for park operations um.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Um Ken Daniels, do you have any interest in the park operations?
Yes.
Alright, I nominate Ken Daniels to also sit in the park operations subcommittee.
Second.
Does agree?
Alright.
Alright.
Any other nomination for park operation? Um okay. Legacy and cultural affairs, any nominations?
I nominate myself.
Yeah. And if I can step forward on that, that's right.
Um okay, we have a second, we have a vote on the floor. Those who agree, you're willing on legacy and cultural affairs. Uh. Uh I also nominate Sandra Freeman and request for a text message to sit on the legacy of cultural affairs. We have a second.
Second.
We have.
I'd like to nominate um. Jeff Cohen. For um fundraising grant.
I second that. There's very. I. Jeffrey. So yes.
It sounded like I think it's going through a bad spot again, it sounded like he said I.
Um. Okay. I'm good. So so far. What I have is fundraising grants, I got.
For finance, I have um Chris Colson and Ashley Blythe. For events and community aga. Hey, mom guys, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry for everybody watching, Nicole, William, can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah, you went off for a second, but you're all good.
I'm not sure what went on, uh what was the last thing that you were able to hear that I said?
You started to re uh kinda uh confirm uh everything that we just discussed.
Okay. So the fundraising grants was Ashley Blythe and Kirk um Jeffrey Cohen. Finance was Chris Colson and Ashley Blythe. Events and community engagement was. Um. William and also Sandra Freeman. And. I believe that's it. Am I missing anybody there? Park operations, I. Have um. Chris Ott and Ken Daniels and then legacy and cultural affairs, I have William and Sandra Cooper. Oh, I think it's cut out again. I think the internet is going in and out right now. William, were you able to hear all of that or no?
Yeah, I'm I'm still good to go, I I'm I'm still here.
Okay, alright, I just I just noticed that my meeting, I was like it's not. I have one more nomination, I nominate myself to be on the park operations subcommittee, that'll be the three of us. There, we have a second.
Second.
Is agree?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay. Let's just start over my.
Yeah.
Alright. Um moving on, remember the consideration of sign design and wording for the municipal park, this may be something that one of our subcommittees take up. The operations too, but Chris, do you wanna kind of? Go over the sign that we have like the wording on the sign.
I can put it up here and I don't know online if you'd be able to see it, but um. Yeah, then these were, this is by no means. The right answer, but. It is a start, it's um those signs are already enough. They're they're at each gate. Um. Yeah, they were put up for um. The festival, yeah, so. Um. It again, it's a start, but I don't think it's maybe the final solution uh. So uh first off, you know, I don't think we need to. Decide or you know, discuss even. That much, but the logo and what do you wanna call it branding for the park, I I think it is an important thing we need to. Talk about, uh that one was. You know, just they try to get uh water, trees, birds or anything there um.
Did you create the logo?
I did, yeah. It's. It's, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a start um. As well as, you know, you know, William brought a while back, kind of one of our first meetings was the vision, you know, the park. Our mission um. That needs to be talked about.
Yeah, that's.
Uh right now, it's such a place to connect with nature and community, that that again, just a suggestion. And then just kind of broke it up into, you know. Uh. Rules per se, you know, do we call rules, guidelines or? Uh so.
It'd get exciting to be do that presentation.
Yeah. No, but uh folks, you know, you do talk within the community, I honestly, a lot of them don't, you know, that. Don't like a lot of rules for the park, right? And I think it's a part of our messaging that. You know, I come from a military background where we say discipline gives you freedom, uh you know, in that. We want a safe environment, we, you know, we want this park to develop in the right way. I'm sorry, but that probably benefits having some some basic rules or. Simility and and as well, it's probably the bigger issue is just safety out there. It's a large facility that. Is really gonna be on on monitored, right? I I think of it like the beach that says no lifeguard and no station, right?
Right.
And. That's that's gonna be the reality of our park till maybe a few years till till we have a a full time. Staff if we ever do out there, so I. Those are those the rules, you know, obviously no alcohol, you know. Other than events and things like that, uh. Weapons, you know, it is a hunting area right around the national, you know, surrounded by the national forests, but we've seen. You know, weapons, that might be. Special fires, um that's where. Again, surrounded by the national forest, uh. Just thinking about that. We could say in approved, only in approved, you know, we do fire rings or grills or something out there. Trash, um. Something to think about, though now there are some bins that are left over out there, but. Trash, dogs, I think it's gonna be a big issue uh with the park, it's a great place to take it off. Amazing, but should they be leased?
Put them back to your ground?
Yeah. So that goes under pack out and trash, so dogs, leash, there are alligators out there, I know at least two that are in the lake, you know. Some later day, those fairly large. Uh. Parking and designated areas or re-designated area, vehicles outside and parking areas are not allowed. We put those thing in there for Charleston County Sheriff's Office and then. Then under recreational activities, some things I think we really need to to look at is the use of the lake. So right now to get us started, I just said catching release only. There's some great fish in the lake, but. I don't know, I'm not a biologist, but it could get fished out pretty quickly if, you know, that. Does it fall under, you know, E and R, you know, rules? And all those things, uh so to me, it's like catch release only for now.
Think it's probably a D and R and do a survey periodically to see about the population.
Yeah.
Cause there may be some species in there that need to smugly be removed with time each time.
And we'd have to check with the green bill on that for like the specific areas and stuff, and then the park rules are. Outlined in ordinance, so you're just follow. What those rules and regulations are, cause as I said. There's a very specific section of the ordinance that states. What's allowed, what's not, cause there's one where it says there's no fireworks. Allowed with fire tactics and stuff like that. Um you could have. Park rules with like maybe a QR code and then lists out the very basic ones. Just a suggestion, but those would be um. Explicitly listed in the board piece. Yeah, that section one back four, I have a five, there's a few pages.
Yeah, I looked over, like roughly we're following some of the requirements in there, but yes, they're not all sticked here. And then.
I know some details, but they're general.
And so they can really. I don't think it's mentioned in there, so I say human power. Maybe, you know, right now it's electric control motors. Electric motors are getting really uh large, like you can get. Electric motors are getting really, uh, large, like you can get sixty horsepower, so, I say, uh. Wing motors, again, keeping with the breathing space and then the, uh. Type of park building, those type of. Trailers, drop it bones in there.
No. Um, I do like. In there. Um, good work. Yeah, I think it's a good starting point.
Right.
Another idea you could do is have smaller signs at each of the gates, so just basic operations of what the hours are, and then in different locations of the park when you go in. Having the larger sign with everything listed.
Okay.
But.
I like that one.
Because I can see that, just like at each, if you think about, like, each border walk, when you go to the beach, doesn't have all beach rules listed, but. At certain ones, they got a big sign that says. Don't feed the wildlife, don't do this, and it's a huge listing so that if you are in violation. They could be like, we did post it at these locations.
Definitely.
And just in case nobody, not everybody has a smartphone, just standing QR code.
Yeah.
So definitely basis there too.
Okay. Work. Uh, number ten, I'm taking a consideration, you know, there's a little team of, cameras like municipal park. Catherine, maybe you can put.
Yes, so, um, I still have some questions for team, I've got an updated one today. Um, but the plan is for security, we have, um. They have a five G capability that we could put three cameras at each of the parks, and they could be established to go around like a tree with a strap. That we could say that you are on camera, so we can see who was going in and out of the park. Um, while we are moving forward with it, uh, the rough cost was. Around a hundred and twenty dollars per camera, but I also have to look at the, and like around twenty-one dollars for. Added to the phone bill each month, but I will get exact numbers for the board for that consideration, I apologize, we don't have that tonight. Uh, but that would be something to move forward with, so that we have more security, and then if, um, anybody was entering park unauthorized, I could get access to. The sheriff's department, or I can send that video to the sheriff's department, and they could go investigate it. It would just be like the cameras that are here, about the same size as the hourly cameras, so the one that's like above right here. Um, and then we also have a couple of them around the building, and they can be solar powered as well, so they don't have to have an entry source. And the five G capability that they would have is the town is on a government contract, so we have the top priority for that five G capability now. Um, instead of being on business five G, so we're on the same level as first responders.
I think it's great, I think.
Yeah, we get security.
Yeah.
And then I'm gonna just general park maintenance for the, for the board, and I can show you exactly where.
We've got a lot.
Who would install their cameras?
Believe two mobile, but I would wish to.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll be up there.
Well. As park operations. Committee. Yeah.
Um. Okay. And then, if you'd like me to look at it, maybe more than just the three, I was just thinking one at each debate, second to ask. Team of us will pick me that both.
Uh, to the back gate, it's not like Greenway Trail, um. So, the gate, if there's, if the back of the park along the entrance to the, uh, Greenway Trail might be another location.
Just thinking myself.
Okay. Moving on, number eleven, scheduling a joint meeting with the town council, this came up at last Thursday's town council meeting, it was a great idea. Good luck on being all of us to agree on some page, but I don't think it does really forward this, if we throw some things out there, if you want to check the council and see when. That would be available, I didn't, I didn't make myself available.
I would say what dates are, is the general consensus for the, a forum of the board to be available.
Really good for a regular park schedule meeting?
We can recommend that, can Blythe and I can get the council to come.
Because it would be more likely that we have more board members that are already planned on, like, for our usual special, and I know that's, you know, asking. Whoever our council wants to participate to attend, but just a call.
I agree, I, as, as much as we can keep to our. Regular.
Regular schedule.
The, the better, but I know that goes.
Yeah.
Obviously plays a part in, what is the date of that to me?
Um, it would be. October the fourteenth. Which I'll go ahead, let you know, and where I will be, I will not be ready up, letting. So, down one, fourteen. Um. Then on.
Does it have to be in person? I mean, I do, ideally, I'd be better in person, obviously, but if, you know, if things can't. If, if our schedules don't work, because I know, uh, you know, I, I won't be here the first week of October. Uh, no, actually, I'll be here the first Tuesday of October, I won't be here for, um, the, the meeting that Thursday. Um, I, I'm relatively flexible though, but I know the first week of October, I'm, I'm not here and, uh. Well, I, I can't really say that because my new, I'm in Atlanta this week, so I'm not sure where I'll be, I'm relatively flexible though, but, uh, we can. Is, if virtual is an option, what do we think about that?
Yeah.
I know, love the meeting person, but, you know.
We would still have the virtual capability, just like all of the other meetings now, thanks to the meeting hours, and now if there's any pickup, I would just give you a call. Like if for whatever reason, my hotspot or the hour wasn't working, I would set it up so that you could still attend, or any number of time.
I.
I, I, I think it's gonna be difficult in October, I'm looking at the schedule for years, well. Maybe push it off, just maybe like. We, I don't think in October, you know, if Williams had issues to.
Right.
To me, I think it's, it would be good to have as much any person's participation if council's to be. Uh, there's a lot lost, um. Um. I mean, it's a good backup, but.
Yeah.
If we already know that we're gonna have.
Aim for the November, the park will be, that would be the second, that would be November the eleventh. Which is. Better to say.
Yeah.
That was a relief.
To it about there, we could be part of that, but as a tentative. For the November eleventh, it's gonna be the new year. And then we're already here and then we can meet with council and just write something and get our, finish your all the same nation. Uh, okay, number twelve, any couple comments? Number thirteen, board member comments? Now.
Yeah, I just have, like, I, I think it's really important that we need with the council, if you all, um. Were either attended the council meeting or watched, I watched it online, um, there is a, and, and it's good to see, there's emphasis being placed on our park board to get.
Well, that's right, I've been right, right?
Um, and I felt the pressure, you know, a little bit that they're looking for us to, you know, perform and bring them face, so. Um, but, given that, uh, I, I think there are things we need to hear from them, for instance. The biggest one for me is we're given some responsibilities here, but I don't, I am not, other than the ordinance. Right, what authorities do we have? What am I able to go out and get rewards, like, and there, there's some, in my opinion, some difficulties running apart. In one way, we meet as nine members of your will eventually, there's power in those numbers, right, to come up with. Good ideas, and I think we're on track with these committees, however. There's also difficulty in trying to run a park with nine people, right, we, we don't have a, a manager who. And, quite honestly, we have to debate everything like, okay, what's the lower, what's this, what's that, like. We're gonna go Chestnut Brown versus, uh, well, there's dark brown for the benches, you know, I'm just thinking longer term, I think those are the things we really need to ask council. Um, and Chris, you the finance piece of that, right? I, I know they're looking for us to say, well, how many times a year do we mow? Uh. Rightfully so, they, they have. I, I think that's a great question, but for us, well, I know it was just mowed and it needed mowed, and now there's clumps of grass everywhere, because it was wet. It was too high, so I say, hey, mow it every two weeks, well, we don't have the money for that, I, I don't know that, we don't know, we don't have the budget. We haven't heard from council, so it's like the chicken and the egg, right? Do we, are we given a little bit, I would like some bar grails, right, I'll build the roof, you give me the, the greatest. And I, I don't know the best right now, and, you know, those guidelines is what I'm asking for, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I, I know how much money we have to deal with either.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah. I've heard a bunch of different ones, just to give you that. Um, we've got the three grants, then the town has some money they can spend, but we don't really know how much all that is.
Yeah, and, and I.
How much could we recommend this year, and even then, the towns, but it, so.
Yeah, that's exactly my thought, Chris, and it, it's just, I don't, I'm not trying to play fingers or anything for this one, I mean, we just set up this board in July, that we're an official. You know, entity here, and, uh, we're just, you know, we've got committees now, I, I think we're on a good trajectory. But to me, that's, I think we all need to put some homework into some questions, and maybe we even provide those to council before day one. You know, these are, you call them RFIs or requests for information, this, this is some areas we're struggling on guidance, right? Um, and, and we need to do that homework, so that's a productive meeting, I think if, you, you know, I'm talking to myself more, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We, we have to come in here because. I, I don't, it, maybe they would say, oh, and Catherine, I don't know if it's legal, but anything under twenty-five thousand, or you have. That authority, so. I'm big on, if you give me responsibility, what's my authority to next and to do stuff, right, and I don't feel. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I agree with her, I agree with the other names, but they want us to make recommendations to pick and approve.
Yes.
Yes, so I agree.
Yeah.
That is very true. So, that's your right, I guess, um. Why don't we recommend it, you know, continually dollar proof?
Yeah.
At the end of the day, I, 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 I agree with, with you, Chris, everything just needs to be clearly defined of what we're doing, because, um, at that meeting, it's, you know, we are. You're, especially you and I have been, you know, kinda leading as far as getting quotes and all that great stuff, but, you know, after that meeting on Thursday, it's, it's kinda like. Well, we're trying to do all of these things, but then council, you know, certain people in council are, 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 you know, saying specific things, well, like, how do you know, we want you guys to do this? So it was like, we just need to go to the table, and I think we can, yeah, come up with a, a list of questions, but the clear concises, like, we need to know, okay, well, what do you guys actually want us to do? Then it's simple as that, um, because. I, I honestly, it's, it seems like you got, we putting, putting a lot of work, and then it's like, well, we don't want you guys to do that, well, 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 what the heck, you know, what, what is our actual role? And I think we need to discuss about amending the ordinance and making that clear and defined, so, you know, this won't happen. You know, when our time has come and gone, you know, there's, the next people can come in and roll in and be smooth, so, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you guys, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with all that.
Yeah, and, and I think everyone has the goal of, you know. Opening the park and, and doing it the right way, it's just, uh, yeah, and, and the ordinance, I, I think we have to be experts, I know, I'm, I've read it. But I'm not a, you know, expert in it, so, that a little bit to our point, though, we're being like, that's a little bit on us, like, we, we have to be familiar with that. Because the council has laid out some stuff.
The, the ordinance isn't clear, the ordinance isn't clear, um, if I'm being, because, it's, it's not, because, uh, the rec, the whole Chris, the me and, me and, uh. Prowse, that, that whole situation, um, there isn't, he was pretty much saying, well, um. As far as our recommendation for who we would think would be a potential great fit for, you know, the, the, the committee, uh, for our, for the park board, um, his argument was, well. You know, what does it say in the ordinance, so I don't think anyone really has a clear understanding of the actual ordinance, because. It, all the ordinance said was they have the final say, you're, so granted, yeah, we, I should know it, oh, and believe me, I'm gonna know it back and forth by the time the next meeting comes, but, uh. It, it, I think it's just a lot of unclear things that, that council and us as a park board probably need to sit down and maybe, like, maybe we need to amend this to this and do this to that, so we can all have a clear understanding. Because I, I just, it's not clear, it's a lot of, it's a lot of gray area in that, in that ordinance, if you ask me.
And. That's really my point, like, we should be familiar with it, I, I know I need to be more familiar with it. Come up with my list of questions that I would like to have someone, and we, I would say the best thing would be to provide council with that beforehand.
I agree.
So they're not just blindsided, like, and, and you'll get a lot better response, I think, uh, is the professional way to go about that.
So homework lesson for all of us in the board, and is to come back to this board next for you, and then get our own list of questions up.
And then we, I would recommend that if you, for like digesting it the week before the meeting, so like, if I get a forum with both. The park board and the council for November eleventh during our park board meeting. Because then the council, council send y'all your questions as well, so it's like a list of questions for discussion, and having it more like a, a facilitated workshop. So let's discuss this one, discuss this one, and other things come up, um. And for the budget, I can, I thought I sent that to you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
False word.
I can send that to you guys with just a snapshot of the budgeted expenditures for the park, the revenues and the expenditures. Um, and then going over what operating expenses have been so far.
Yeah.
Everything for the office, again, has been in the last year's budget, so that was what they had budgeted for the, uh, group.
I have a question.
You have to speak on that.
Yes.
Okay, um, and I know you, I, I, I'm not sure if everybody is aware. That we, um, we lost, we just lost fifty-nine hundred dollars of, uh, recreational money, why, why, why did that happen?
For the, we have, are you in reference for the park grants, and that we have three active park grants.
Yeah, what, what happened with that, though, I'm just saying, are we, that had anything to do with us, or that's just the, the town council, or what, I mean, you know?
The, the three park grants, we have three active ones that we still have the pool of money for, um, those are the ones that I currently know. If there was a fourth one for fifty-nine hundred dollars, that, the, the reason why we lost it is just because that there wasn't a project moving forward with it, I. I'm not sure if the reference is the fifty-nine hundred dollars. Because we have three, we have three part applications with the state right now, one is for the signs, two are for benches, for various amounts of money, one of them is coming up in twenty-twenty-six. The next one is twenty-twenty-seven, and the third one is twenty-twenty-eight, whichever will send to the board, those are our three active ones.
Yeah, but didn't the state come down here, uh, uh, and for, to, to do an audit on, on one of our grants that we, we didn't get the money, we, we lost the money for?
The. We're not eligible for grant, certain types of grants, because we don't have an audit, a current project. These grants have already been approved and adopted by the state. Discover South Carolina, I agree. Did that, am I answering your question, or am I not?
No, you're not answering my question, because, I mean, I, I know this for a fact, because they called me, because I used to work for Park and Recreation. The state called me, asking me a question about a, a fifty-nine hundred dollar grant that we lost because of, we didn't do certain things.
I assume the state told me that we just haven't had a grant.
Okay, well, maybe I'm misinformed. Okay, well, maybe I'm misinformed, I will get re-informed on what 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 was told to me, um.
I I can, I can sit down with you, Mr. Cohen, and go over those, because it could be a grant that I didn't discuss with the state.
Well, we, I mean, I think, I mean, what, my question, I guess, more so is anything is. Does that have anything to do with what our board?
Not, to my knowledge, no.
Okay, well, then, then it's a moot point, then, because if it's not anything to do with our board, I don't need to bring it up to this meeting, then.
Yeah, I don't remember hearing anything about that.
Well, I I assure you, I assure you that it did happen, but. Um, it doesn't have anything to do with our board, so I'll leave it alone, I'll I'll stay out of that.
You didn't worry about your comments?
Yeah, just to recap, we'll circulate the three. Active grants. And also the. The budget that the town put together, so that you can all start looking at that. I know a lot of that falls on me and the finance side, so. I'll put it together.
Okay. Alright, any other board members? Alright. Motion, Jim?
I've shown you.
Same as I did. Meeting in general, I'll give all of your time tonight.